Again, this is our Duluth Public Schools ISD 709. It is our monthly committee of the whole meeting. I'd like to say this is the meeting where it all happens. This is where conversation, this is where presentation, information, good dialogue back and forth. So I welcome you to our committee of the whole meeting. It is a meeting that's, I don't want to say it's less formal, but there is a feeling of conversation and a back and forth dialogue that you often don't see at our monthly board meetings. So again, I want to welcome all of you that are here. Certainly welcome to our presenters and thank you for graciously giving your time after hours to come and give us this important information. To those in our community that are listening when we load this up to our district's YouTube site tomorrow, we also want you to be able to get information that's important to the decisions that we make with our district and our kids at heart. So I want to welcome you at this meeting. We do take role, but we don't vote on anything. So there's not any real formal acceptance or that kind of thing. So I'm going to turn it to temper clerk, Lockwood Camp, who's going to sit in for member Oswald tonight.
Hey Kelly. Kelly Derek Peter is excused. Member Kirby?
Here.
Member Rosie Lockwood Camp here. Chair Lofol?
Here.
Alana Oswald is excused. Member Sadaski?
Here.
And member Sanho?
Here.
Superintendent Magus?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Anthony Barnes?
Present.
And our administrators, the rest are excused. And then Board Secretary Kayla Carroll?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, member Lockwood Camp. And again, we are here at our committee of the whole meeting and I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Barnes, who is the one that we really have to thank for all of the information and presentations that we see at our committee of the whole meeting. So Assistant Superintendent, thank you.
Thank you Chair Lofol and good evening everyone. Glad to see each and every one of you.
Thank you.
We do have several presentations today and we're going to start right away because it is a very robust agenda. Make sure there's enough time. We're starting off right away with a presentation by our principal Jacob Hensler. He has to provide some information related to residential class size sizes as well as provide just some information around the various programming that our residential sites provide. So we are pleased that he is here with us and I'm going to turn it over to.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me. Looking at, who is the next? It's basically the treatment sites and a lot of times we hear residential, but it's more than just residential. When we talk about the treatment sites, a majority of our students are actually day treatment students that are inside of our programs. The different sites that we have are Arrowhead Academy. Arrowhead Academy is strictly residential. Then there's Bethany Crisis Shelter, which is very short-term state. Typically those kids are there anywhere from 24 hours up to 30 days. Is there a stay at that facility? We have Chester Creek Academy, which is a mixture of both day treatment and residential. There's two day treatment teams for October 16 students there. The rest of those students are residential. St. Mary Creek Academy is a mixture of residential and day treatment students. Superior Academy is strictly day treatment and those can be up to 14-day state. And then Rockbridge Academy is strictly day treatment. Looking at the different facilities going on into a little bit more detail. With Arrowhead Academy, that is a partnership with the ARC, Arrowhead Regional Correction Facilities. Students attend the program through the courts and the justice system or probation, maybe a probation violation. They can be there anywhere from a couple hours up to several months. Typically at AJC, we look at it as long-term care or short-term care. Last year, as an example, we had 17 students that had long-term, which is over 100 days for those students. And those students on average stayed for 156 days. Then there was 147 short-term student stays that were averaged just 22 days. And when I look at my enrollment on that, it comes out with real quick, 191 students is what's kind of there. But in reality, it was 170-some because some of the students were in several times. Going back down into it, the students at Arrowhead, they're from Minnesota, from High Falls down to the cities and into Wisconsin. Arrowhead Academy is the only facility that we have at this point in time where we have an MOU, which pays for the educational portion of the Wisconsin students. Because typically with the Wisconsin student, we do not get an educational reimbursement for them, except that through Arrowhead, we do have an MOU that kind of takes that into consideration so that we get the education portion is reimbursed for them. Trying to think what we have at this point in time. We have 147 students and that have been in the facility up to the first quarter. So 29% are minority students and 46% of them are special education. If you don't mind pointing to the next slide. Bethany, Bethany's really, really short. It's a collaboration with Lutheran Social Services. We provide educational services there on an as-needed basis. So there's some days, sometimes it might be a week, that we don't even have a student there. But when a student does arrive, we have to provide the educational services for that student. So then I have one teacher that I kind of have on call that is willing to go and provide those educational services two to three hours per day if a student is in that place.
Is there a chance where Bethany students go to a school? Leave the facility and go and attend?
That is a very good question. The answer is yes. So if a student is from Duluth Public Schools, the student is transported to, like if they were at Lincoln Park, they would be transported to Lincoln Park and they participate in their normal school day at Lincoln Park and then they go back to that for every evening. The ones that we provide the education for are typically those that are out of the region that we can't transport them back to their home school. So as an example, Hibbing, Virginia, Moone Iron, International Falls, sometimes even coming from Fargo. It depends on, because it's a crisis shelter, wherever that student is coming from, if there's not a bad outfit facilities in their area, then they look for them open that.
I went to the Bethany Open House. Bethany built a new campus out in Morgan Park last summer and the facility is so much, you know, I don't think this facility wasn't good the first time, but you know, when they first built it way back, you know, I don't think they visioned exactly how much the need would be. And so it's really a nice facility. Are there, if they're from the Procter-Rentschall, do we transport them there?
We do not provide the transportation.
Oh, we don't, okay.
Bethany Crisis Shelter provides the transportation. So they will provide that transportation. Their staff would put them in the van and drive them to whatever school they're at.
And going back to the Arrowhead Academy, how many teachers typically staff that?
I have four teachers that are full-time there and then one teacher that is an art teacher. So that I'm providing a little bit of an elective for. And that's a .6 position where she teaches three classes.
In the grade levels?
Grade levels for Arrowhead is six through 12. And the grade levels for Bethany is K-12.
Do you have trouble filling teaching positions at any of our treatment? Are you, I mean, we all are, so are you affected?
I think the hardest thing pertaining to filling positions is when they are a .FTE. So as an example, I have a music position that is still open that I share at Merritt and Chester, but it's a .3 FTE and it's music. So that's a very hard position to fill. So that one is actually still open. That's the only position I have open at this point in time. Plus pair of positions.
Do the programs accept students, like a specialized student up to 21 or is it?
We kind of go on the guidelines of the treatment facility with that. So most of those facilities have an age limit of 18. If they are in the program when they started at, typically if they're 18 years old, they're not going to be admitted into those programs. But if they were 17 when they were admitted and they turned 18, they'll let them up to 19.
But none taken?
But none taken because of the age limits pertaining to the facilities and Northwoods guidelines, ARC's guidelines, Essential Health's guidelines for Amberwing and Lutheran Social Services guidelines. Chester Creek Academy, that's in partnership with Northwood. Children's Services, that's both residential and day treatment program. It's a K-12 building. Students stay at Chester Creek at an average of 148 days. 24% of the student population is identified as a minority. 65% of them receive special education services. The average age on entry is 11.9 years.
I know we'll have a lot of questions because our treatment center schooling is really, I mean, I think board members probably that have been on the board a little longer than some of us, you know, have heard our presentations. But when we're going to Chester Creek or Merritt, is that a choice by the family as the best service for their child? I get where you talk about Arrowhead Academy and their need, but for the other treatment centers, is it?
All of the other treatment centers, it is a family option. Some of them may be referred, especially like Mary Creek Academy, which their residential program is a PRTF program, which is a psychological residential treatment center for a facility. Those students may be through social services that we're coming through because of the higher needs. Now, and if we looked at Mary Creek compared to Chester Creek, the treatment staff ratio is different also at the two different facilities because of the PRTF. When we look at just the residential portion of it, when we look at the day treatment portion of it, that is going to be the similar staff ratios that Northwood has at all the facilities. So there's a little bit difference depending on what is happening within that treatment facility and who they are providing services to. I don't know if that answered your question.
Jake?
Yes.
For Mary Creek and Chester Creek, is there a percentage of these students coming from out of state also?
There is a percentage of the students at Chester and Merritt that come from out of state. But typically those students are coming from North Dakota. I think our furthest student that we had last year from out of state was from around the Devils League area. So it was a halfway across North Dakota, third of the way across North Dakota. So some of those students are coming from out of state. But it's probably a smaller percentage. I think last that I heard pertaining to the Fargo run, I think they were running three or four students. So at this point in time, we probably have three or four students that are living in the Fargo-Moorehead area. One or two of those coming from North Dakota.
And again, how many teachers, you know, out of Chester?
Chester Creek, I have three elementary teachers and I got a mental blocks I'm counting in my head as it runs through the rows. One, two, three, four, secondary.
Pretty equal between that and Merritt?
No. No, because of the number of students that we have at the different facilities. Merritt is a lot bigger facility. Typically we're running at about 80 students at a time at Merritt. And at Chester Creek, I think we're at about 40 students. So at Merritt Creek, I have four elementary teachers compared to just the three at Chester. And I have five secondary teachers compared to the four. So there's a little bit difference in the staff. Since from Mary Creek, that's also a partnership with Northwoods and it's a PRTF program as well as the other, oh, I forgot one teacher. I'm sorry. Diagnostic and Assessment Center is also at Merritt Creek and that's a 30-day program.
Okay.
So that's one extra. And that teacher actually teaches a K-12 classroom. When I look at Merritt Creek, there's 80 students currently enrolled. Students stay at Merritt Creek on an average of 143 days. 23% of the population is minority. 62% receive a special education. Average age upon entry is 11.1 years. Sometimes at the different sites, it gets a little harder to educate them based, because of how the programs are set up. So like right now, the state is not allowing us to mix the students that are day treatment and residential like we were in the past because the state coming from Department of Human Services is kind of dictating what's happening in the classroom where I'm working with MBE and we're to kind of figure out who actually has control of that classroom. So right now, we can't mix our PRTF students with our day treatment students. Pre-COVID, we did, but now we don't. So it created a little bit of a problem with us for staffing and how we set up the classrooms. So right now, I have one elementary class that is strictly PRTF students. Which means again? The psychological residential treatment facility. So I started off the year with a good number. I just had eight students and that was running grades two to five. But because of how enrollments come in, right now that classroom is now at 14 students, K-12, K-5. So I got to figure out something else inside of there on how to make those adjustments so that we can better educate those students. If you ever want to see a teacher that is phenomenal at her job and how she teaches a wide range of students and abilities, I recommend coming though. I'd gladly have you walk through that classroom. It is phenomenal on what Julie Waltz does in that classroom.
Thanks for the insight because I don't think I've ever really visited any of your facilities and never knew if that was an opportunity.
Oh, awesome to hear.
You've got some great staff and I know also from Merritt, you've got a whole fine combination for your social workers too. So it's great that you've got great staff and you recognize them too.
Superior Academy, that is a partnership with Essential Health. It's also known as Amberwing.
Oh, okay.
So if, everybody kind of knows Amberwing, but we know it as Superior Academy. That is grades three through 12. 14-day treatment program. So far, when I typed this in, it was 66 students and I think I'm already up into the 70s on that one. Last year, we provided services to 304 different students at that facility. And we're on track to be pretty close to the same again this year. Last year, the year before with COVID, we actually did an online program through that also. So we were pulling kids on a daily basis from High Falls, Rochester, Menacado to be part of that treatment facility. This year though, the treatment facility is not providing that online services. But we still have students that are driving down everyday from range or coming as far away as Aiken, Minnesota on a daily basis to be part of the program.
But typically their stay is 14 days, yeah.
And it's a day treatment.
Yeah, they go into their.
Next slide please. Rockbridge, I think you did click that already and I didn't even notice that. Rockbridge Academy is a partnership with Northwoods. It's a K-12 day treatment program. Currently it's up to 32 students at a time. Average stay has been 148 days. 24% of the student population identified as minority. 3% special ed services. Average age upon entry is 12.8 years old. Last year is the first time that we add the elementary portion of it. There was such a waiting list for elementary openings inside the day treatment programs that we had that opportunity to start providing services to the elementary students there. So we have one team that can have up to eight students of elementary. The other two, or the other teams are secondary combination of middle and high school. Yes?
So Northwoods extended their program at Rockbridge? Wasn't there a transition happening that maybe didn't happen? How to explain that?
Well, at Rockbridge, Rockbridge used to be partnered with Woodland Hills. So Woodland Hills went bankrupt because of the East Beltway facility. And so that kind of closed down. And when they closed down, there were 16 students that were inside of the day treatment program at the program. And Northwood took over that day treatment portion of it. And we bumped that up to 24 students without adding any teachers, just to help with the mental health of the students as we're running through COVID. And then continually looking at it, so Northwood needed, wanted additional space for that because of mental health. That's happening with a lot of students doing COVID stuff. I think that's my last facility. I think I've got a lot of medical orders, so I think we're. Do we have any other questions? I know that I did also submit, it's just my All-Star site star data kind of really gives a lot of that information for that.
Thank you.
When we, when I do my student improvement plan, I don't do one for each site, but I do it as a treatment site combined as well as a continuous needs assessment. Kind of goes all of my sites. And I primarily, when I look at those, I look at Arrowhead, Chester, Merritt and Rockbridge that I do star testing. So when I look at the student improvement, because of my transient population having MCE data, really doesn't tell me a good picture of it. So what we do is we do star testing of the students when they first arrive and then we'll do another star data testing mid-year. And then we'll also do one when the students are discharged so that we can actually see what the student growth is for the time that they're with us. And our goal is that anybody that is with us for at least 90 days, we should be seeing substantial academic growth. And then the supplement that I kind of gave you kind of shows what kind of growth we have with our students for the, as well as multi-time.
I just think as a district, we should be happy to see that we're still able to utilize Rockbridge to serve the needs of students in the region. And it's good that we partner with Northwoods and Northwood Eastern, we'll take that.
Go ahead, Dr.
Are these average days total days or are they school day?
School.
148 would be more than 50 days.
Correct.
I just had a follow-up question about the, you said the state, it was a state kind of rule that they're not allowing you to mix your day treatment for residential. Is that, the way I understood it when you said it, is that it's COVID-related and?
It started with COVID because when, when COVID hit and we were looking at the different programs and how to do it, this Department of Human Services set up different guidelines for how the treatment centers are supposed to be run. And then we have our educational guidelines for it. And the treatment sites, as an example, in the Duluth Public Schools, we don't have to mask in schools. At my treatment facilities, we are still masking. So we're running under a little bit different guidelines and a little bit different rules than in school would. And because of that, in order for us to continue providing services to the students, both residential and day treatment, one of those solutions was DHS that, because they didn't want to have a big outbreak inside of a treatment, residential treatment facility, there's that separation of the day treatment students from the residential students. And because of that, there's still that separation.
That's what I was thinking, but thank you.
You know, I would just like to say how much I appreciate your leadership with this very, very important programming. When I think about the mental health needs of our students and our community, I'm really proud of what we do here in Duluth. It's, I know in some ways it seems like the norm, but it's not the norm. And many other states are very envious of the type of programming we have with day treatment services and comprehensive residential supports. And I think that those, those aspects being, but under your leadership but also with the fine teachers that you talked about, where it is really an asset to our community and really something that we need to continue to show appreciation for and also continue to look at how can we expand support. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And in all seriousness, if you ever want to see one of the facilities or check it out, please just email me and we can see a vote.
Or attend a graduation. Some of the most special moments that I have in my memory is attending those unique, sometimes individualized graduations. So great job just to have.
Thank you. Thank you.
So next we have a presentation that will be given by Principal Volkey. We also have Director Lava here, who is also supporting this work. So please come up to the table. Yeah, they bring my props.
I never touched that before. So you can have two because I know you're going to get thirsty with all the props and all the juggling.
And I also wanted to let everyone know and the community know as well, the presentations you are seeing today, at least by Principal Volkey and so Hensler, are a direct result of questions that were brought up from the last Cow meeting. So this is a follow-up regarding some wonderings around enrollments for our residential treatment centers and also some questions regarding programming that is occurring at our ALC AEO. So this is a follow-through on that request. And I'll turn it over to Principal Volkey, who's going to lead us through some information related to ALC and AEO.
All right. Well, thanks for having me. It's always fun to talk to other adults that are interested in education. Not always the case, you know? Anyway, I have quite a bit of things that I wanted to cover. And so if at any time you want more clarification, let me know. But I just kind of wanted to start out by saying that alternative education by definition is different, okay? And when we say that something is different, a lot of times people just don't understand that it's different than the traditional. And so it can be really confusing sometimes to make sense of it because our systems are set up for a traditional school. If in a campus, traditional school, it's all, a lot of times we're taking a square peg and putting it into a rock pile in how we understand and interpret the needs of our students. You know, like Jacob shared, he has a lot of students. That's an alternative education. So there's a need for the work that we do and I know that people understand that. But there is an even greater need. But there is an even greater need. We're looking at credit recovery and the effects of the pandemic. And so we're going through a lot of discussions of how we can best serve the district as a whole. This year, at September fifteenth, we ran some data on how many enrollments we had the year before at the Academic Excellence Online. And we had three hundred and fifty students last year on September fifteenth. This year, we had over seven hundred. We were slanting. For the first time ever, the Area Learning Center had to close registrations because we filled up in the first week of school. Okay? So the needs are great. And if anything, the pandemic has taught us that, you know, there's a way to be flexible. And I think we offer a lot of flexibility in how we provide education, both with the Area Learning Center and Academic Excellence Online. And so just some, some general numbers, I'll kind of start out with the Area Learning Center just because that consumes a lot of my time, energy and thought because of our recent designation from the state of Minnesota, the Minnesota Department. For this round of designations, it was the second time that we had been identified. And with ESER, the, the federal government requires that every single state have a, a single designation protocol. And the unfortunate thing is to get those federal dollars, we have to apply that one single designation to all the schools. And so you can imagine, if we're looking at graduation rates of students, why wouldn't the Area Learning Center get identified? And so we were identified the last round, we're identified this year because we're getting students who are program of choice who are credit deficient right out of the gate. And then what can we do in that short timeframe of four years? And so I want to put that in the perspective of how we were identified based off of our graduation rates. And so because of the, the graduation, four-year graduation rates, we are going through a, a series of improvements. The last round, we identified two or one evidence-based practice to incorporate MERS groups, which is much like a professional learning community, but we focus on behavior, attendance and course performance. And so every, every team member, staff member is a part of a MERS group. We identify students and then we come up with interventions that are evidence-based. This go-around, we were fortunate enough to receive a check and connect coordinator. And so that's another state sanctioned evidence-based practice that we've implemented at the Area Learning Center to increase graduation rates. And so out of the, the three that are designated by the state, the other one is BAR and Denfeld has added that into their repertoire of strategies. And so we're, we're doing what the state has recommended, but the need still is great. So we're going through a needs assessment, looking at what are some of those implementation barriers that we're having, what might be ways to improve the systems that we currently have. And that has included a huge net. Now, as you can imagine, the two schools that feed into the Area Learning Center, Denfeld and East, we're having conversations with them as well. And we have included them in our comprehensive needs assessment because they're a linked school. What they're giving us is, they're doing the best that they can. But we also can look at maybe some earlier identification of students. So students are coming to us so far behind in credits. And so we're having conversations with administrators and counselors. And is a, a much needed conversation to find early interventions for students. And some of the systems that we do have, unfortunately, we don't know if they're benefiting as if they had been originally intended. And so we're examining those with a really critical eye on what's going to be best for students.
I don't know if you have this data, but I would, I'd be interested in if somebody just down the road about how many other ALCs across our state were identified. I'll, I'll go back to your earlier statement. It's no surprise to me, who spent my life in a classroom, that of course ALC, if the state is really looking to identify for some reason, you know, why an alternative learning center that is there for the needs of students who are typically not successful in a, in their homeschool, to, to have an alternative which maybe will fit their need. But they're already struggling and the school's already hard. So it just seems odd to me that the state would go ahead and identify you unless they feel like identification of for you opens up doors of opportunity, either financially or just for kind of a, maybe a wake-up call. I don't, I don't know. But then, then it frustrates me that, and I'd like to hear that you're connecting with East and Denfeld because those are mostly where some of your students are coming from. But then it feels rather odd that if you're identified and you're trying to find ways to make kids successful, Denfeld feels or that family feels that that placement in your academy is a better fit, but yet you're already struggling with students who are struggling. Just seems, I'm so glad you're working together because it seems like there's already a little bit of an obstacle that the state has placed for our high schools and our alternative learning centers. So thank you. I think you're the right guy to work with the colleagues that you know well.
Yeah. If I could, if I could jump in, in all fairness to the state, the state fought the federal government. They really pushed the federal government to not have that as a requirement. And so they saw, actually they sought a waiver and the federal government says, no. And then, so at the end of the day, MD had to go through with identifying sites. And unfortunately, ALCs, probably all of them are identified. But I will seek some clarity on that and see if there are ALCs that did not receive that designation. But I'm sure you know the state did seek a waiver and that was not granted.
Maybe we should be looking at our legislators that serve on the national level from our area and see what their insight is to help us maybe clarify that. Because I just feel it's unfair and it puts a lot of stress and unneeded stress on your staff and yourself to try to, you know, I would rather have you just meet the needs of our students, you know what they are, build relationships with them, get them to trust us and stay with us. But there's always this little edge of performance that you're supposed to share with us and your supervisors and us.
Yeah, it is what it is.
I know.
And I appreciate the empathy. We're going to still do what they ask us to do though.
And then also I want to add that during the Cow meeting that will take place on November the twenty-ninth, it's our World's Best Workforce Presentation. Dr. Lake will be there to provide some information about how sites are identified through ESER as well as the World's Best Workforce and, and how the district was identified. So he'll have some, some really good information and she'll provide the rationale that state has given us in terms of how the district as well as schools have been identified. So that will happen on the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, you know, maybe you said, I'm sorry if I missed it, but how many ALCs are there around the state? I know they have a conference. I have presented one a few years ago.
I don't know. There, there are a couple of different programs you can have. You can have an Area Learning Center and an Area Learning Program. And it's all under that, you know, Minnesota Alternative Programming. But every, every area in Minnesota can either have an ALP or an ALC. And so we cover Two Harbers, Proctor, Turbantown, any school district that was within a visit, a site visit from a student. And so we have thirty-six percent of our students came from Denfeld last year and thirty percent were from East for our seat-based program. And we'll pull from Harbor City, pull from all over. And so another part of that comprehensive needs assessment is educating key stakeholders. And this, you know, does qualify for educating key stakeholders. On the, the flip side of the house, which is AEO, we were identified as students not participating in the MCA's. And so as, as an online school, there are a lot of challenges to get students to come in person to take an MCA. And so I believe the cell size was twenty and Tonya Lake, if you're watching this video, you can correct me. And we had twenty-two students that were eligible to take that MCA. And so we made it, missed it by two students. And so now we have to come up with a comprehensive plan to identify students so that they can take the MCA's. And so to put in perspective, as an online state provider, we have students in International Falls all the way to Rochester, Minnesota. We have to come up with a plan to address students taking the MCA's. So that might be a partnership with the Rochester Public Schools. It might be a partnership with Roseau. I don't know. But we're going to come up with a plan with that. And we have had some initial conversations and planning. And that'll be kind of the next step of, you know, how to address the MCA lack of participation for an online school.
Is that a fairly new, I want to call it a punishment, but you know, I don't know. It's probably, that's a harsh word, but I thought that I was listening at other school board conferences where school districts parent. Is, is it because the parents didn't notify you that they were opting out?
If they opt out, it counts as a non-participation.
Yeah, okay.
And so if we had twenty-two students and they all non-participated, that shows that we had twenty-two students. So.
But I, I have heard through other school boards that that, that's a trend and that's a, you know, parents are, are supporting the, the position that they're not going to necessarily partake in the MCA's. And so the state is punishing school districts and it just seems, okay, okay. Other things to talk to the legislators about, I don't know, or something, but.
And I would say to some degree, the designation by the state and identification have, it's in some ways it does have a somewhat punitive appeal to it, but I think there have also been some really great conversations we've had as, as a district about our continuous improvement processes and how can we make sure that we're doing deeper needs assessment as a, as a district. And so I think that overall, it's, it's hard to have your school or district identified, but it also gives us some tools to focus in the forward too.
Yep. You know, and I've always looked at state designations as really a blessing, believe it or not. When Laura MacArthur had some success ten years ago, I want to share the story because it makes sense to explain it this way. We were at Washington, in Washington DC, the White House. And the corner of my eye, I see three Chinook helicopters come in. And I'm thinking, President Obama's got to be in one of those. Okay? So sure enough, I watched the helicopters come in. Two of them remain in position, one comes down and I see Mr. President, President Obama jump out, jump into the White House. And how this can help, why it's a blessing is that at our continuous improvement team meeting, we had Denfeld, we had East there, we had Mr. Bonds, we had Director Larva, we had support from the Regional Centers of Excellence, they're our air cover. So we can go in and, and do the work that needs to get done, but we have that positional power to say, you know what? We can look at things a different way to improve the system. And so, you know, it, it can be a different way of looking at it. It's a lot of more, it's a lot more work, you know, to, to do it. But I think there's a lot of benefits that'll help our students at long run. Okay?
That's why you guys are in the positions you are and I ask questions that give you, to tell us, you know, why we look at things in a positive light, which I.
It's the only way I can survive.
I know. So thank you. That, that's a great, that's a great explanation. Makes me feel better.
Along those lines to Terry Huddle, who's working with us from the Regional Centers of Excellence. I would say that we're extremely pleased with her support. She was a district employee for a long time, so she has an inside-outside perspective. And I think she's been an asset to the team in that air cover.
My apologies. Okay, so I am not anyway expressing that everybody needs to celebrate Easter. This is just the basket that I have, okay? And I know there's a lot of discussion about how in the heck does ALC and AEO staffing work? And so I really wanted to keep, keep things simple, bring a little fun to how we staff ourselves. So it makes sense. Okay? All right. In a traditional school, I want these golf balls to represent a class. Okay? And there is a Pro View One, Mr. Sandholm, that I'm going to give you at the end of this presentation. Okay? If you're a golfer, you know that those are the best golf balls to have. All right? So in a traditional classroom, I'll say over at Denfeld, here's a golf ball, that's one class, two class, three class, four classes, five classes. There's one ball teacher. Okay? Makes sense? All right. Traditional system. All right. Now I'm going to take these out of here.
It really isn't easy to ask.
And I have some other things. Okay? Now, just because these are different, doesn't mean that they aren't in school or don't have as much to do with education. Okay? And so at the Area Learning Center, the easiest way to explain it is this way. The closest we get to traditional is our seat-based program. And so I have a teacher right now that has one of these classes, a seat-based classroom. And they go from in the morning, in-person, and then the afternoon, we have digital learning. Okay, so just think of it this way. This is now an ALC, AEO staff member, one traditional classroom.
Same students in the afternoon session?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Now, now I did have in Board Book kind of an explanation of these things. So if you wanted to follow along, you can do that too. This is independent study. Now, an independent study class starts as soon as a kid decides that they want to kind of really be alternative in their education. And typically students will only take two independent study courses at a time. Okay? They're on their own. They don't have a whole lot of connection to the school other than they can come in the afternoons and work with our staff. But they work independently for themselves. Okay? So our staff members have that as part of their job responsibilities. Okay? Another part of their job responsibilities, which is equally important, is credit recovery. Okay? Independent study is different, very similar to credit recovery. Okay? But I don't want you to confuse the two. They're completely different purposes. A student who is in credit recovery needs to re-credit a class that they have lost. And so I've got a hockey puck, I've got a ping pong ball and a golf ball and we're still kind of trying to figure out how an ALC and an AEO staff is because they're not full-time yet. Okay?
So right now in your basket, is that just one teacher?
One teacher. Okay, still one teacher. We're going to make them whole.
Yeah, that would be point six so far, right?
Yep. Okay? And just for fun, we're going to give them two seats. Okay?
An English class.
Yeah. All right. So we're at point eight right now. Now, to make this person whole, and this is how AEO fits into it. Now, all of these things in here, you can hit with a ball, you can hit with a stick, a bat. Okay, a soccer ball is completely different and this is AEO. I want to stress the point of, did anybody have a, a child who played soccer?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a, a big difference between American football and soccer. And oftentimes people who don't understand something are going to talk trash about soccer. Okay? American football would be, hey, I can't believe you're playing that stupid sport. And then the soccer players are going, I can't believe you, you know, are playing that sport. But it can be very confusing. Right now, I don't even know. Every single player on a soccer team who told me involved, my kids have played. Okay? Explain offsides, I still don't understand. Okay? And a lot of times with AEO, people are confused because it's different, it's not traditional. But the trend with AEO is skyrocketing. And people like soccer want flexibility in their schedule. And so to make this teacher full-time, they teach an AEO class. Okay? So right here, we have one teacher, four different responsibilities, but one full-time. Does that make sense? Okay? Now, I'm going to take it a step further and I'm going to change up the game and I want to put a student and the flexibility that they can have in their schedule.
Nathan, the size of the AEO class, is that? Did you say, is that a reason? Did you say, is that a reason why you use a soccer ball?
No.
No?
It's because soccer sometimes can get trash talked. That is not a legitimate sport.
But some of the AEO classes for your staff members are very big.
They had been, we did get some relief to the equivalent of a one-point-o to be spread out. And so that was, if you could picture another soccer ball in here, that was a one-point-two that the teachers have on an overall. But it's easy to do that when we have so many different pieces of the puzzle. With Jacob, it's really difficult to make a teacher, you know, music to kind of split them. Whereas we have credit recovery, independent study, seat-based program, AEO. It works, okay?
Do teachers, so if an AEO's teacher, can you assign them a class out of their licensure?
No, no, they have to be licensed in their content area.
Okay.
No. Okay. All right, now, a student in a traditional setting, okay, and I'm going to go back to the golf balls, is they have typically five classes unless they take a zero hour, okay?
Six.
Or six, they can take, or they can have a study hall or whatever, okay? So a student, Duluthi student, they're taking civics, they're taking English, they're taking social studies, they're taking science and math, they're going to take AEO, okay? And there's a trend for students to take AEO, okay? We currently have an agreement with Cook County, bringing funds into the school district that we never would have had. And so that trend, obviously based off of enrollment, is growing. There's a student right there, okay? Some students might take their credit recovery, some students might take in addition to all of that, they might want to take a credit recovery, and now we're getting a one-point-two for that student, okay? Which is the credit recovery. And the things, and the conversations that we're having is there are students right now that have credit deficiencies. And they're sixteen. And so as soon as we sign a student up for credit recovery, we get an additional point-two, even if they don't finish their course, okay, because there's no deadlines with credit recovery, okay? So if a student, Charlie, is enrolled at East and they turn sixteen, we can get them in credit recovery. And then we're going to get a one-point-two for every year that they are signed up for that course. And so this is an additional revenue stream for us that we aren't capitalizing on. And so that's a conversation that we're having with the counselors and with administrators, is doing a credit check for students immediately if they turn sixteen, let's get them into credit recovery. Because it's additional funding, which means additional resources that we can use to support students.
But sometimes credit recovery would mean that they are taking a full lower of five and then either doing an online that they could handle maybe in the evening. Online, could they do some of that work independently on their campus? But it's still, when they're struggling to begin with, if they're credit deficient, taking more than five would be.
Yeah, in some cases that is.
Yeah.
But also, it's additional funding that we can get for a student. And then we can figure out ways to get them caught up. Because what we're seeing now, as a result of the pandemic, is a need for credit recovery. And I don't see us going out of business anytime soon, but we need to accelerate student credit at a pace that we haven't done before. Because two years of not earning credits is severely hampering graduation rates at both of our schools.
As AEO continues to grow, and we hope it does, could you ever see where the AEO staff is AEO staff, they're not intermingled with ALC?
Potentially, I think the greatest piece of AEO success is the collaboration. And there's a different mindset when you look at an alternative teacher. They have a different mindset. And when you kind of couple that, in AEO, typically we have the four-year college-bound student, okay? When you couple that and you collaborate and you're onsite working, you kind of have the best of both worlds. You have kids who are on the bottom rung, but you have kids who are going to go into MIT, taking AEO classes and calculus. And so I like having that marriage because it brings balance to the force. If you're in Star Wars, it really does. Into how they go about and how they approach their lesson plan and their collaboration.
I was just going to ask, so about the credit recovery piece, I, if I remember correctly, your staff are there Monday through Thursday
Yes.
fairly late compared to other teachers in our district. So I would imagine that would really help with the credit recovery piece. If I have a student at East who needs to take a credit recovery course and they need some help, they could come to the ALC.
Yeah, and we do have a staff who goes out to the sites at Denfeld and East for support. And one thing that we did talk about was, right now, for students who are fourteen and fifteen years old, they can't do credit recovery until the summer. And so it's a wait-and-see approach. And when we're looking at interventions, they need to be early, that's what the practice is saying. And so, I mean, if, I don't know, if, the model that was chosen was years ago to do summer school, and maybe we still continue that, but then that would be additional dollars that we would, you know, put into credit recovery. And you could have, at the sites after school, it has to be after school. We cannot do credit recovery in the school day. It has to be after school or extended school.
That also makes sense from a transportation standpoint, at least at least.
Yeah. You know, and then, you know, we'll continue to have the conversations, but then if a student is not having success and, you know, we're going to have them come to credit recovery, you know, there's more face time in front of students that that are already struggling. So don't know yet what the best answer is. But those are kind of the talking points that I had. Hopefully, that kind of clarifies the, how we go about staffing. Like I said, it's crazy to kind of think Apollo's different pieces, but it makes sense to make a teacher full-time.
Number seven.
So how, with your growth and the challenges, how are you surviving it or getting by with the space needs and requirements at Tech Village right now?
Yeah, really good question. We're at capacity right now and the need is greater. We currently have thirty students on a waitlist to get in for our seat-based program. An example today of a benefit, I met with a family, I walked over to Duluth Counseling Center and by the end of the week, they're going to be seen. I can't say enough good things about the Duluth Counseling Center, having them right there, okay? And there are obvious challenges to being at Tech Village. And I won't go into those challenges now, you know, but growth is a big thing. We're looking at different type of programming for middle school, you know, with our school within a school. When we're looking at, you know, how to expand AEO, you know, to have a greater reach within the state, you know, that does hamper growth. And so we're stunted right now. And I think the needs far outweigh the resources that we have. But we're doing the best that we can.
I just have more of a comment than a question, but I'm just really looking forward to a year from now and hearing some reflections on that partnership with, is it Lake County? No, Cook County.
Cook County.
I'm just, I'm just looking forward to kind of hearing about how that goes, what we can learn from it, maybe how we can expand it if that's a good idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Number seven.
Did you have a partnership with another school district last year for math?
Yeah, and we.
You know, that got a dagger.
Yeah, it went really, really well. How they had staffed it was they had a paraprofessional in the room and then helping assist with all of the online and the modules. You know, it's a shift in how kids are, you know, learning. And we had a lot of carryover from students from Fudland taking chemistry, taking, you know, English. And so it, we have a lot of holdover from Fudland. And so, you know, that's a trend that some of these outline districts are having a difficult time getting getting their schools staffed, which will avoid, you know, in a lot of different ways.
Super hidden. I just want to say thank you for the, all the creativity that you've shown and that your staff has shown and flexibility here too, as far as how we, how we meet those ever-expanding needs of our students. I think that it's a very, very important part of the tool belt of what we offer our students. There are things that we need to figure out as we expand and grow into the future that I, that I look forward to continuing partnering on. And the one thing that we look at is how do we, how do we account for, like, and I think what we try to figure out is how can we account for the FTE that goes, the staffing that goes to the ALC, AEO better? Because sometimes that basketball of AEO kids, it's not like you have a set of thirty kids from from East High School that all of a sudden say, I'm going to go to AEO, and you just transfer the FTE. Quite often, it's little pieces throughout the year that haven't been, so we have to figure out a way of of accounting so that we can shift the resources as well.
Yeah, because the trend is we're probably going to be scratching that one thousand students by the end of the year. That'll be a first time ever and.
And again, that's kind of why I asked that question. And I understand the marriage of ALC and AEO and how that is, but, you know, sometimes I wonder if that's not hampering the growth of our AEO that if we strictly put a lot of our balls in a basket for AEO and made a concerted effort, one, those teachers, I, well, I do want those teachers to teach in a collegial way, but they could really be teaching from any place, as far as that's, that building-wise. But I don't know, that's, that's how my lens is when I look at my, but I'm a traditional teacher. So I want to see AEOs, you know, is a, you know, we know if we have X amount of students enrolled in AEO, we're going to designate X amount of teachers to support that program. And as it grows, we put much more teachers, you know, to work that way. When we couple with ALC and we have all of those different balls that make up one FTE, it's harder for, for a board to look at how do we best help you staff and make our kids successful?
And also.
That's your job, so. Yeah, I'm done.
Oh, no problem. So speaking of space, one of the things that I want to make sure that we remember, one of the things that we are working on also is our phase-two planning for our ALC, AEO programming. Director Larva, working with, you know, Mr. Voki on developing a team around that and having really good dialogue on what is going to be the future, what kind of programming do we want to offer through our ALC, AEO? And through those conversations that will ultimately determine, well, what kind of space or spaces do we need to support that, those programs? And through that conversation, we're going to have to really dive deep into some of our current practices in terms of if we do want to expand AEO, you know, do we have the capacity, you know, to do so? Is there, what's the cost, you know, the benefit of doing that? Also, a practice of allowing many of our students right now who are taking advantage of some of our programming, they are students who are sitting in our current schools, either through zero hour or taking other opportunities. And we have to start thinking as a district, allowing that flexibility, especially if it's not for makeup credit opportunities. We really are putting ourselves in a position where we are paying for opportunities for students, but we paying at a price. Meaning, we already have a math teacher, English teacher sitting and teaching in our schools. But if a student can tomorrow say, you know what, I missed, Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so, I don't want to go to that class anymore. I'm going to take a class through our opportunities here, they can do that. At least in our current practice. But they're still at the, at Denfeld and they're still at East, but they might be in a study hall. Right, because now they're not in that third period, whatever class they decided they didn't want to take advantage of. And so we really have to start just evaluating those things because that ends up costing us twice because the teachers, again, are already at Denfeld and East. Now we have to figure out how to support those kiddos with this additional opportunities. So I think we really, as a district, just need to really dive deep into a lot of our practices to make sure that we're not breeding those situations. Number seven.
But at the same time, we need to recognize that that same student could go to Eden Prairie or to some other district that's offering the same thing, to do an online course. So it's kind of figure out how we can manage that. Because, you know, and if we're not going to take in our own students that are making that decision, that same student's likely to say, well, okay, if I can't do it, ISP seven or nine AEO class of whatever, they could look at other opportunities that exist out there across the state.
True, but we wouldn't allow that student necessarily to have that opportunity during school day because we require them to actually fill their, fill their schedule. They can take a study hall, but I'm not aware of students being able to just take. Can a student in our district take three study halls if they wanted to? I think that's not something that we support. And so you're right, if it's extra opportunities, you know, again, to take our AEO classes or take an online class, we want them to use ours, but we have to rethink, during the school day, do we want kids, students taking, opting out of classes that are already available in our brick orders and then find themselves in a study hall when the classes aren't available, so.
But they should, I'm sure a lot of those AEO students could be doing it in the evening or at other times.
They would, but they're still in that study hall, which is now too big. I've seen it firsthand because I saw that our districts, and I do see students in the media center. And when I ask, you know, what study hall they're from, then they say they're, they're really, this should be their math class, but they're going to do it in the evening. So, but I get it. And I think our goal, we certainly want AEO to be, that is a trend of the future. But if we can market our AEO so that we're truly getting a, I would love it to be a full-time AEO student that's taking, you know, the majority, if not all, of their credits online. And they might be from Morehead or from I Fall's or somewhere else because we have a good reputation for our AEO and we're not probably taking advantage as much as we should on that with marketing, but.
And I want to make sure it's clear, it's not a criticism, I'm bringing it up not as a criticism of our programming. It's a, just like for our treatment centers, I mean, we offer some excellent opportunities for kids to make up credits, to get on track with graduation. So we should, we should be really proud of all of the different opportunities that we have in the district. And so I want to make sure that's really clear. And we also have to be, you know, really thoughtful about the resources that we do have and making sure that we don't end up, you know, creating a situation where again, we're paying for programming options that could be avoided. So we just have to be thoughtful. I don't know who's first, number seven.
On that topic, just kind of, it's on what you're talking about. Last year, because I was at the ALC graduation, I think you had your first student, right? That did four years of AEO.
We had seventeen graduates this year, we have thirty.
Yeah, but what's our number for this year?
We have thirty full-time seniors, so we're looking at thirty graduates. And the other piece too, and this is just a numbers thing, is I looked at the numbers of math classes at East because there was, you know, some, I was just trying to figure out where are these kids coming from? And looked at the rosters, it was thirty, thirty-two, twenty-eight. They all were healthy class sizes, but they had started out really high, in the forties, okay? And so kids are leaving for a reason. And if they were staffed at forty to begin the school year, they're leaving to someplace where it's going to get what they need. And so if those classes were still healthy by the end of the year, and so it does come down to looking at FTE and staffing too. I just thought that that needed to be mentioned because that's what the data was showing at the end of the year.
And I'd just like to say thank you, Mr. Voki, for the work that you're doing. I think that both the transition to the new location, the leadership transition, the way that you've worked with our staff and students to support, especially through COVID and at the end of COVID where those greater needs are there, very, very important. And again, as Mr. Bond said, really, what we're trying to do is just, just make sure that we're answering all the questions and thinking about how do we best support all of the programming, especially those for students with significant need. need, as we look at our, what are the desired daily experiences of our students, staff and families. We're hearing a lot from our students and our families that they want to be able to have flexibility, uh, in the way that things are offered. They want that, that's something that's, that's an attractor for us. So we just, just have to think about how does, how does that fit within the whole framework of how we, how we serve our, our students and families with the resources we have.
Like our other administrators in our district, have you had trouble staffing? Have you struggled to find the teachers you need?
No, and I, I think that's partly because of how the contract is, that it's a Tulsa position and that people want to come in and, um, you know, want to work at ALC, AEO as it is a Tulsa position. And, you know, and they're challenged, um, you know, to really create a really good product. And so we've been fortunate to not have any staffing issues. Thank you. Appreciate you. I appreciate the work that everybody does. Thanks for being my helicopter.
Thanks for the, uh, I'm a visual learner and I like play, so.
Next up, we do have a presentation by our early childhood services Head Start Director, such a long title, Sherri Williams. She'll be joining us. She will be providing an update related to Head Start training that our board participated in and completed.
So I, how was the training? I just have one slide about the training, um, it was before this one. I know it was a long training. So I'm just wondering, you had a chance?
How was the training? What did you learn?
It was probably the most thorough Head Start training you've likely ever had.
I was going into it thinking it was gonna be a half hour. Maybe it was because I just took, because, you know, this is my first time going through it, so I took some time.
No, we've never had it either.
Oh, you've never had it? Okay, so I think I was like four hours into it. I really learned, listening, I, I really enjoyed learning about the history of Head Start and just kind of seeing like how it was started in nineteen sixty-five by Lyndon, Lyndon Johnson. And then just kind of, like, I took some notes here, but, um, you know, in nineteen ninety-five, the grants kind of started and the fatherhood initiative, which, you know, it seems like maybe that should have happened earlier, but it's, it's, it happened, so that's good. There was a focus on that. And then, interestingly, in two thousand and seven, um, that's when they really started focusing on improving for school readiness, even though, of course, that's what they were doing before. Um, and then I, I enjoyed the, kind of the scenarios in the training, specifically on like, oh, if we had to open up a new Head Start facility, um, you know, all the different pieces that they looked at, like where they would, how was it, transportation, you know, obviously, these are things that we think about as a school district as well, even as they relate to other programs other than Head Start. But those are, those are good.
I was glad it allowed us to save it after each module. I wasn't quite sure when I, when I started it one night and I thought, ooh, this is, this is taking some time. And there's like six of them. So I'm thinking, hmm, I think I'm gonna just take a risk and, uh, log out. But when you log back in, it saves where you are. Um, and again, I, you know, I thank you. And I thank board members that, you know, went through the PowerPoint. It's, it's, it's a necessary step and, and we are all better for it. Um, I hope I don't have to do it two more times. I think I would learn better about Head Start if I just visited with you for, um, a day. Or I would imagine I'd have to come, you know, I always say this to three to five, two more days. You're not gonna get that much from me. But I always think that when any of us are invited to, to, to visit any of our sites or any of our classrooms, when, when I ask my community too, that are asking questions about our school buildings, um, I don't want them just to come one, one day for one hour and think that they're gonna walk away with some, you know, big revelation. So, but I, you know, the scenarios were really good. I, I failed a lot of the questions, sorry to say, which is, I, I was kind of frustrated about that the very first time when I saw there were like three or four questions. And, um, I didn't wanna go back and click on the link that said, "If you want, if you need help, go back to this link." I kind of clicked on it once and saw that it was, um, like seven pages of research and information. I thought, hmm, I'm just gonna give it my best shot. And sometimes I was right. And, you know, but it took me, it took me like back to my high school where I just guessed at some. And I was like delighted that I guessed right. It's like, okay. But, I mean, it was, it was good. And, and again, like Amber, the scenarios were good. You know, if I was a parent and here's what I was gonna come into, or again, I think I shared with you, the last, the last not module was my best one. It was kind of the overview, like if you were, and I thought, how could I fail all the earlier questions? Um, and then get to the end where they ask you about all the directorship and leadership and management and communication. And I was doing, like, I got one wrong. That's it.
Great job.
And then I thought, oh, I wonder if this is tracking by my email button. So thank you.
Right. Such a thorough, such a thorough, just be, one thing that we can get though when we go into classrooms is the historic, the history of the program. And one of the things that I think is the most amazing is that in nineteen sixty-five, Duluth did Head Start, the school district did it. So we have been a Head Start grantee since nineteen sixty-five. That's very unusual.
That was not in, in any of the slides?
Right, yeah. So those slides came right from, um-
Yeah.
Head Start has a very thorough training site called Early Childhood Intelligent Learning Center, which, um, has great things for us to onboard, uh, staff, et cetera. So, so you got the, you got the long version. It wasn't just an overview. So, but I appreciate that you, um, looked into it. It was good. So thank you. Um, the other thing that I wanted to share with you is the annual report to the public, which is something that, um, we share with you every November. Um, this year, we really, Nancy Vega, who is our new business manager, is very good at making these look pretty. So I wanted to share with you just how beautiful it looks. So a reminder of, um, our Head Start mission. But what we love the most about this are the numbers that will, so Caleb, you can just keep scrolling. So we can see the funding, um, sources that we use are a federal Head Start grant, a state Head Start grant, and the Pathways Two Early Learning Scholarship Award. And those three funding streams are what we, um, uh, fund our Head Start classrooms with. The Pathways Two pays for a second pair of professional to be in our classroom. Um, the state Head Start budget pays for a home visitor and two home visitors working with families experiencing homelessness. So they're doing it at Washington Center downtown. And then our federal Head Start budget covers, um, the classrooms that are found in seven of the nine elementary centers. We believe that all children should have strong bodies, strong minds, and strong families. So, um, addressing the health needs is one of the things that, I don't know, look at my, I can't really see the words. So I'm gonna just see here. Um, uh, so we work to make sure that they've got continuous health insurance. Um, and so last year, we had, we served two hundred and six children and ninety-eight percent of them had health coverage at the end of the year. Um, at the beginning of the year, only sixteen percent of students were up to date on their yearly physical exams. And at the end of the year, it was sixty percent. And that's a problem right now with, that, that's a pandemic result that people didn't take their kids to the doctor for, um, just routine exams during the pandemic. So that's a, an area that we are working to really improve. Eighty percent of our kids were up to date on their immunizations. Um, eighty-four percent of them have a dentist that they see. And sixty-four percent of them received dental care during the school year. We do partner with Children's Dental Service to get dental care provided at school. We do have a licensed nutritionist who works with our families to help, um, make sure that our, the food that we're serving in our program is healthy. Uh, and then we do have a domain in physical development and health, uh, in our assessment that we can measure, um, how, how do children grow physically during the course of the year in the physical and health domain? So there's a lot of growth that happens there. We do have a collaboration with the YMCA. So last year, seventy-two preschool children went to a six-week anti-drowning program called Safety Around Water. Nine families tried out the Y for the first time and two received scholarships to regularly attend the Y. So we're trying to support the health of not just the student, but also their family. If we look at strong minds and getting kids ready for kindergarten, um, using our, our assessment tool, which is called the Desire Results Developmental Profile, um, we can look at, uh, the four-year-olds in all three of our programs. Remember, Duluth Preschool isn't just Head Start. We are also voluntary pre-K and school readiness. And so we do like to compare those three, um, funding streams, knowing that the children in Head Start are all experiencing poverty. And so we want to see that we are seeing growth that's similar across all three of the programs that we serve. So we keep checking that. When kids come into Head Start, in the first forty-five days, they have a preschool screening. Twenty-nine of them were evaluated for special ed during the school year. Thirty-eight came into our program on IEPs. Um, twenty-five of those twenty-nine children who were evaluated, were diagnosed with a disability. And overall, and usually roughly about thirty percent of the students that we serve are on IEPs. So, uh, we pride ourselves in being a fully inclusive preschool program. We pay close attention to the growth of students on IEPs. We wanna see a similar growth rate, uh, with our students on IEPs as with all students. Um, and so, uh, we, we can see that indeed there is a similar growth rate, right?
So students are on IEPs as early as four years old?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sometimes sooner than that. A lot, many children are diagnosed between birth and two. Um, but that would be early childhood special ed does hold visits for that population, but-
Can you describe what some of the typical supports kids need at that time? You know, is it hearing? Is it for walking? Is it for speech?
Yeah, in Head Start, it, it, once kids are done with birth to two, I can't speak to them. Honestly, Becky Crane could do a good job going there though, but usually before kindergarten, kids have something called pervasive developmental delay. So it's not categorized as any particular speeches can be, but there's not like learning, like reading disability or math disability. Um, so really just pervasive developmental delay. Things aren't developing on cue. And so, um, they'll do OT assessment, PT assessment, um, and just support to, to bring them up. Many students, and that, Becky Crane should come because a lot of great work happens with early intervention on the special ed side of things. Many students who are identified, um, young can get the supports that they need to not be on IEPs at a certain point. So early intervention really is a powerful tool to get kids on par with their peers. So that'd be a great presentation though.
It looks like this graph that shows some of the, and again, it shows that transition from fall to spring, but it's very, it's hard to read because the letter is so tiny from social, emotional and language letters to have it to physical.
Right, so those are just our, um, the learning domains on our assessment tool right there. So, and we're just seeing-
So, so some of those students, are they off IEPs by spring?
Not usually, but it can often happen, you know, between, um, at kindergarten, a reassessment typically happens. And later in the early primary school years, uh, we can sometimes see students a lot.
Do you, I, I believe you do it. Do you have a Minnesota Reading Corps staff up there?
Yeah, we've got, in three of our classrooms, we've got a reading corps staff. Again, we monitor the growth, um, with, with an eye on equity of all of, um, the subgroups of students. So, and again, we're just checking to see, are we seeing growth, um, in a similar fashion across all races? So, and we see some great growth happen in our classrooms. We know that last year, uh, there were all the round, you know, the rounds of Omicron and Lon, uh, isolation periods following that. But our enrollments or our attendance in Head Start was still eighty percent and eighty-five percent in preschool overall. So that felt like success. And then last year, we also had a, um, we were involved in a research project with UMD and Antioch University, uh, where they were examining the impact of nature-based practices on, and their impact on executive functioning. And all of our classrooms participated in that as, you know, we're focusing a bit more on nature-based pedagogy and practices. And, um, their results are coming out soon, but the preliminary results show tremendous growth. Um, in such that David Sobel, who was one of the conductors of the study, said that even though we're not a full nature-based program where the kids are outside all the time that they're there, we're getting outside one to two hours mostly in a forest and on a playscape, that more growth was seen in our students than in any other group of students. So, uh, Duluth Preschool had some tremendous growth happen. And when that study is published, that would be something I would be very happy to share with you and, and anybody else who will listen.
Was that the gentleman who did the presentation?
Yeah, yeah. So that study's just getting published and the results were really astounding. So, so we're very proud. We're really looking forward to seeing those results come out. And we are again involved with the study with them again this year, um, on the impact of vocabulary. So some nature-based programming and its impact on vocabulary for students with lower SES. So it'll be interesting to see how that study-
So I joined that training for, I, I, I went to stay for a short period of time.
Yeah.
It was a really great training that our staff will be, will be provided this summer. And when I walked in, I was like, I thought it was a regional training, right? I thought it was like, oh, these must be, you know, teachers from all across the, the area. They were all of our staff. And I was like, wow, we have a huge department of experts who are supporting kids. And I think, I don't, I don't think many people know how big the department is and how, how many staff really are supporting kids. And so-
Right.
We're trying to do our very best to really, uh, share those, uh, things with the community and especially just internally as a district. I don't think people know how big your department is. Many teachers and others we have supporting.
Sixty-two staff just in mind. Oh, yeah. And then ECSC, who's in our classrooms as well, has got us there as well, so.
When we're in our new district service building, maybe there'll be opportunity where we could, you know, if, if you're coming to make a presentation like you are tonight for us, that you could invite all of them to come just for the twenty minutes before a staff, a, a start of a board meeting to, to just have a bottle of water and a few.
Yeah, that would be fun.
I'm, I'm good.
And then last of all, we wanna have strong families for our children. And so we are constantly trying to figure out how do we measure this? So, um, but parent, family and community engagement is an area of Head Start that we need to, uh, speak to. Our policy council last year was regularly attended by six parent representatives. Um, meetings were virtual until April and then we went back to in-person meetings. Um, we, uh, survey our families and a hundred percent of the respondents to the service believe, so we've got five family advocates whose job is just to connect the families. So they are checking in with families, inviting them to come into the classroom, inviting them to meet at community resource places. So we might meet at Community Action Duluth to just introduce them to the resources that are there. Um, and so people really feel well- And so people really feel well-supported by these family advocates. They really do an amazing job connecting school and home. Three hundred thirty-three of the families in preschool participated in at least one family engagement event. And fifty-six of them completed a family partnership agreement where they are setting a goal with a family advocate and taking steps to achieve that goal. So we have some areas that we focus on, and the most growth happened in the area of positive parent-child relationships. So that felt good. Senator Jen McKeown did visit a couple of our programs last year. She went to the state-funded FIT program, which is where we're working with families experiencing homelessness, and Oshkam way win at Lowell, and the Lowell Half Day Classroom, which really does integrate a lot of nature-based programming into their classroom. So that was great to see her and have her see some of our unique programming. And then to end is just a list of the people that we partnered with last year. And so we continue to try to look for partners that meet the needs of our families and listen to the families on our policy council to try to... We've got a new policy council, happens every November. So we just sat, seated a new policy council, and already we've got people talking about how important it is for them to make sure that families with different... You have two grandmothers raising grandchildren, and one father who was raised by his grandmother on the policy council, talking about how they'd like to meet other parents like themselves, and they know they're out there. And then this child, this dad who was raised by his grandmother saying, "It would have been so nice going to school to know that there were other families like mine." So already, the policy council is starting to visualize some places where we'd like to do some work in our schools. So great to see a policy council that has some vision to carry out. So that is, that's what we've got. Question?
Sure. Thanks. I just want to say, and we've said this three times in a row, that this again exemplifies some of the great things we have going on in our district. Leadership that we have, the importance there is really, really critical. And you've done a great job in leading not only a great program here in Duluth that's something that can be looked at and modeled throughout the country. And I appreciate that, that leadership and focus on our youngest learners. I think a lot of times, it's the first impression that people have of the district. And it's very, very vital. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item on our agenda is the potential gun and safety storage resolution. I received a request for the district to consider a resolution. And so we added this as a topic of discussion for the board.
But, you know, and I can't remember, I don't have the resolution in front of me. I know that we've gotten a copy of it, but it wasn't on a board book. Does somebody have it still in an email that...
Yep, I do.
Can you forward it to the board?
Well, I don't think, yeah, we all received it.
I know, but I don't know where mine is or if you did. Is it, let's see, let's see if I can... But I just, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this. It was something actually that I even thought we could have discussed at a workshop session, but we had such a full agenda at our last workshop. But it seems to me there are kind of two asks within this email and resolution. I think somebody can enlighten me, that's more the resolution itself, which would be just something we would do at a board meeting next month. And we would, you know, read the resolution into our meeting and then vote on supporting it or not supporting it. And then the second ask of at least the email was that we would, as a district, put something in the August mailer that goes home to all families. Some kind, I'm sure they, they might have presented the document that we would put in the pamphlet for us already. I haven't, I don't remember if they did. But that we'd put it in the mailer that goes to all families in August. And that is a reminder that it's a state statute to have your guns locked up. Right? Correct me if I'm wrong.
That sounds how I understand how, yeah. And...
Chair, if I just forward you the...
Okay.
I did too.
Oh, yeah, right. And I've shared this with board members before about resolutions that come before us. And we have, to my knowledge, we've always supported the resolutions because they're at the basic core of what public education and what many of us on the board support, whether that is a resolution on mental health. I know a resolution on, you know, that this month is suicide awareness month, and would we step forward with a resolution for that topic? As a board chair, for the last few years, I've always felt a little unsure about how to approach that with the board. I don't want any meaty, I don't want it to come up, to come onto your board book, and you see that we have this resolution, and then wonder where it came from. And we never have a chance to really discuss it. So I appreciate the opportunity to just get some feedback as to kind of one, a couple of things. What, what, what does ours, do we have a policy on resolutions? Do we need one? I don't know the answer to that. Policy members might tell me. So that every, when a resolution does come our way, how does, how does the board want the board chair to do that? Or the superintendent or assistant superintendent? Or the clerk, who's also on the agenda-setting committee? That would be nice.
Maybe that's something we could talk about in a work session at some point, too. But as far as this resolution goes, and just thinking about, we're here to, schools are here to educate. We are here to keep kids safe, too. And if it's simply educating families about this state statute and kind of reminding them, you know, about that statute and how to keep their kids safe when it comes to guns, I think that's, all we're doing is sharing an information about a statute. In this case, the way I understand it. And then just thinking, too, about some of the things that have happened around the country recently. Kids getting hold of guns, so...
I know we also had a resolution related to gun violence awareness study. It was a board about similar, similar theme. That was something we did at the June twenty-first Red Reserve Board Meeting. And I think it fits with the ethics of our board and what we're focusing on. And again, I think in some ways, that question of when do we, how often do we do resolutions on the same thing or similar, similar thing would be something for us to consider as well. But I think there's also a need for us to think about how we, how do we make sure that we continue to advocate for this high-needs area? Because really, as pointed out in some of the materials, it's not about being pro-gun or anti-gun. It's about being pro, keeping safety if you choose to be gun.
And our kids alive.
Yeah, and our kids alive. Which, we know Chair Holton, a couple of other people worked on, or we went to an AMSD presentation by national expert, and actually international expert on gun safety, who said, basically shared that the vast majority of school shooters oftentimes are getting their weapons, you know, taking it from a family member, taking it from, stealing it from home or something they possess at home or from another. So a lot of times, I think that if there was an increase of safety there with keeping guns locked, it could have positive impact on our kids.
Well, I also think that some of the community conversation is also directing us to have a resolution to make sure we're sharing information on a regular and consistent basis with our families and our students and our staff. And so there were suggestions for, you know, the August packet that goes home, but there were also suggestions of other ways to continually get this information out, not just on a, on a one-time basis as well. And so I think in terms of this particular resolution, you know, Chair Holton would guess we could have a further discussion on other kinds of resolutions. But in terms of this, this would be consistent to resolutions we've been passing in June, supporting education. And I think that the suggested resolution that was presented to us by some community members was really specific to kind of, some really specific steps we could be taking, like other school districts have already taken, to educate and inform parents, again, on a regular basis. And also, to us as a board, we're going to be doing our legislative agenda coming up before the legislative session begins. And, you know, there's suggestions that just we, as a board, look at our legislative agenda and include something dealing with gun violence. And I would hope that we do as well.
Is this, I could be wrong, is this currently a state statute or not? To the resolution about safe, safe storage? Is that a, already? I guess I thought in my conversations with leaders in our community that this is a current state statute. And what they're, what they would like in the August mailer would be something as a reminder that, that it is a state statute and that we're just wanting to share that? Or I could have read between the words. A couple of things. You're right. In the resolutions that we have passed as a board in the past, they have matched our, our need, our kids. It matches what we want best for our kids and our families. So it hasn't been hard. Sometimes the resolutions were lucky. This resolution, we have some time to have a conversation and agree. But oftentimes, the resolution comes just days before a board meeting, and board members or board chair is like, I would like to share this. And you got enough time to put it on board book. But I still, I would like to turn it over to the policy committee to digest a little bit in the next month, year? I've talked to MSBA, maybe, with, maybe I could ask at some of our coffee and conversation if there's any boards that have a policy that guides them on when resolutions are brought before the board, how does the board want to proceed? Because I just want to be proactive when we get a policy that some of us might agree to and some of us might not. And I don't know, I could be just nitpicky. Just, this is our opportunity for a conversation as well. But, so that's my one ask. I have no problem putting this resolution on a board agenda. But my second one is, and thank you, Member Lutler Kemp, for sharing some other options. It's not just a one-and-done thing, put it in a flyer. But I know, because I've stuffed those packets that go out to homes in August, and maybe some of you too have as either parent volunteers or PTA members, those packets are with lots of materials. And I know that in the past, I've been turned down by my administration at my school to put some flyers in that packet promoting either a debate team or a speech team or a theater. So I know that individual buildings struggle to get that August packet out because of the amount of materials, the printing, the staff, the stuff that it goes on. So it's primarily the work of the principal and the secretarial clerical staff. But that doesn't, so is there another way? Could you put it in the handbook?
It could be included in the handbook. If that's what was decided, you know, at that...
Well, that wouldn't necessarily be, necessarily have to be our decision, but if we, as a board, would ask our administration to think of potentially other ways of getting it out besides that August packet. But if, if, if the, I would like some feedback from our principals about putting it in the August packet and if they saw that as an obstacle or if they really thought it was something important as well.
Yeah. Over the last two years, organization called East Smart, we've been really supporting safe storage with various communications. And this is just very similar to what has been requested. I guess this, I think this just takes it to another level of a board resolution as prescribed here. But in terms of communicating to families regarding the safe storage of weapons, we've been sending things via email, things have been placed on social media with regards to that. But I would call an official resolution as being requested here. So that's why we have a discussion is saying, is this something that we truly want to move forward with? Obviously, the board makes those, you know, makes those decisions on what resolutions are, what we'd like to move forward with. Clearly, we support, obviously, the key, our kids' safety.
I guess I would support a resolution. This is very important. We meant to suspend kids perhaps a couple of years for bringing ammunition, I know. And I think, I remember a really important one. This is not, it's just being safe. It's not telling everybody they can't do anything. We're not taking anything away from them right now. We're just making this very public, that we support this, that how important it is. And the more we can get it out, the better off it is.
Does anybody know what Rochester has done?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'll take a look through that right now.
Okay. I know that Member Lutler Kemp often does, too.
I think, I think that they've taken a really comprehensive look at how this should be enacted and how we can think about it, not just from, not just from a notification stance, but how do we take, because it's had such effect on the school communities that have been hit or even school communities that haven't, that have, that are going through RLS training and having those, those factors in place. I think, I think it is important for us to take on, and I think it's important for us to take on in a comprehensive way. And I think that the way that Rochester leaves things out is really clear. I think it also is done in a political way. It's, I mean, of course, there's politics related to trying to make sure that, you know, we can go forward with legislative platform. But it's not meant to be a red or blue point. It's meant to be an act of safety, whether you own guns or not. We promote keeping guns locked. So I think that it's something that we can get behind as an administration and as a school board. And I think that, again, that broader conversation about how often do we do resolutions and when do those come? I think that's something for us to have ongoing. But I think based on our current practice, we haven't had that conversation on yet. I think it would be good to support this.
I did a Google search about the statute question. And according to MinnesotaSafetyCouncil.org, I'm on that website, in Minnesota, it is against the law to store or leave a loaded firearm when a person knows or should reasonably know that a child under age eighteen is likely to access to it. Violation of the laws of those... According to that...
So what I'm hearing is that we support putting this resolution at our board meeting? Would that be the next step?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm in favor of that, too. And I was thinking of the same thing that Superintendent Meggs brought up. I think it helps us be consistent in supporting the other resolution that we supported in June. It's great to hear.
Now, I would just add, you know, we are...
Now, I would just add, you know, we often look at what other school districts are doing on a range of topics. And we look at what's been successful in terms of the ways things have been communicated to parents, again, on a range of topics. And so, the, this is just an opportunity to really kind of build on what, what we've all talked about, our earlier resolutions that we've done in June. But also, really, Rochester, Minnesota is an example of a, a school board that directed and gave good, clear direction to their administration on our support for educating our parents and, and students and, and staff on gun storage. And, and kind of gives specific examples of things that we could be doing. So, I, I hope that we all, that we bring it forward quickly and we move forward and build on what we've already been doing. And particularly in the last two years, to educate our families.
And I know we were able to have this through to our unity in the community and was able, they, they were able to share with, with other members of our community their, their goals and their, their asks. And, you know, so I felt like we were supporting their ability to be within us, be with us at the unity in the community. So...
So, in terms of a process, when it comes to resolution, I guess, resolutions, do we want to, like, just put in discussion? Have it go through a policy committee or a certain committee for a resolution to come to the board? Or keep it open where it can come out of policy or a COW meeting? It can come through different means? How do we want to handle resolutions just moving forward? I'm just trying to think about how we standardize at least the structure for how resolutions make it to the board.
I think if we discuss it in the committee of the whole, everybody has a chance to speak to it. And so, that would be my fear about just putting it in the policy committee. Because I do think if we handle these things in a committee of the whole, then everybody can have a voice saying, "Well, if we move that forward."
In my experience, the trouble has been that the resolutions don't always come to us quick enough where we have an opportunity to have this kind of conversation. That's why this is really great for all of us to kind of listen to each other. So, that's, that's always great. So, I don't know what, I mean, and it can be simply where, you know, you have, you have two really talented administrators and you have a board chair that can, you know, make decisions, you know, for the board because we have kind of past precedents. We've done mental health, we've done, you know, other resolutions. So, if that's kind of the way that we have done this, then the board chair simply, in times when there isn't enough time and someone sends us from the community a resolution. If many of us are involved in other community groups and colleagues that you have outside of the board, if you know there's a potential resolution coming, you know, the quicker we can get the idea of coming. The other thing I was thinking as we were just discussing is, is we, we know fairly often when it is mental health awareness month or when it is, you know, gun, what was the one we did in June? Gun safety.
National gun safety.
Which one, day or something? You know, I don't, you know, we could be a little proactive and, and see which resolutions typically we have done in the past, we would probably support again and, and, or, and do it more regular or, or not. You know, if it comes to us from a community member, oftentimes, the mental health or the national, you know, it comes from a community member that knows that we have a very caring and proactive school board. And so, they send us these because they know that we have done that. That's great. If it lands in a timeline where we can just at least touch base, we probably would never have to have a conversation this long again. But it's a, it's an opportunity for all of us, no matter who's going to lead the board through another season, that they have some, some, you know, some help in making those decisions. Because I, I have sometimes struggled with, with that.
I would just add, I mean, I like the idea of the committee of the whole. Like, if, if we can have a small discussion, maybe not this lengthy, but I mean, that's ideal. Board members are voting on a resolution. It's ideal that we have time to, to talk about it. So, I like that idea and I acknowledge that sometimes maybe there's not as much time and then we have it in our board materials, too. So...
Sounds good. So, so what we are confirming is that we'll strive to send possible resolutions through the COW or through the COW committee first, if possible. If time does not allow and it's an emergency or some kind of urgent resolution needs to happen, that there's still opportunities for that to occur as well. But we strive to take all requests for resolutions through the COW committee for discussion. Right?
Right.
But if not, you know, having a special resolution, you don't have the next appropriate meeting as long as the board gets it ahead of time to review.
I just want to be clear, you know, what is, what is the resolution that we are... If I look at this one from Rochester, there's...
I shared some background.
Right, there's always whereas, whereas...
Their resolution is, I can send that to you as well.
Well, I think I have it in a...
Sorry.
I guess I, I would recommend we use a similar resolution and tailor it to Duluth. It actually wasn't a very long resolution at all. And, and use a similar resolution. We can discuss it then.
Right, the resolution, I'm saying, there's a, you have to have a letter in N O M, Oz and things like this. I'm not sure that that's particularly appropriate for our district.
Right, we can, we can monitor.
Yeah, it would be, it would be...
I agree with Rosie to kind of adjust it.
Adjust it to our district. But, and, and I guess I recommend that, you know, with assistance, you know, it could be brought forward with, with, from administration.
So, we will work on that. I'll work with Adele Williams and we will work on a resolution. That will be brought to the next school board meeting. And we will provide it to the board in advance and for review.
I think as we think about all of this, too, it's important to note that this is not just about school shooting type events. It's also about accidental shootings and also helping people avoid access to guns when they might be thinking rationally and having suicidal tendencies. Or maybe they might, if, if they, if a gun were not protected, that they had an opportunity to get the help that was needed. So, I think that it really, this falls into our comprehensive thinking about mental health needs of our students. And I think it's, it's important for us to consider as we go forward.
Is there any conversation or can, can we hold off as long as we're, you know, getting near the end of our, our meeting about the other asks of, at least the email from Sarah Minsell about sending something out in a, in a packet in the summer and having parents turn it in, that they've acknowledged it like we do for our, our, our school dress or our free lunch or our perm drive, parking permit or...
I think that falls a little bit more into the management area. But we provide to, I could come back, I could come back with further reports to the board if desired during my severance report or with time or during my weekly updates. But I think it is important for us to have that conversation internally. Just as you mentioned, sometimes those mailings are more complicated than it might seem on the surface. But, but we, we are fully supportive of sharing information as we have continued to do in the past.
And again, supporting what Member Laffler-Kemp said about, you know, using this more than just once in, in any, any other way that the district feels they can with touching base with, with your, with our school leaders.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That concludes our presentation.
All right.
That's right.
It always seems awkward when we don't adjourn.
Adjourn, right? It does, it feels like we should have something else.
At least say adjourn so that Bart knows to turn the mic off.